You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 10th, 2024 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
To the Pledge? Okay. I am pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Recording in progress.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right. As soon as Joan gets back, we can do our roll call. Joan, what are you working? Do we know what Joan was working on?
She's getting the hour she's running clock.
Oh.
That can wait.
Okay. Okay. Joan, we've done the pledge already, so please proceed with the roll call.
Okay.
Do you need a copy?
Okay. Nina Dombryes?
Present.
Samantha Arnold?
Present.
Present.
Sam Paxton?
Present.
Rachel Dividendly didn't make it. I'm here. Attorney Brad Nadansky?
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix is absent. Matt Bowens is absent. Park paint administrator Randy Dombries is absent. You skipped over Police Chief. What's that?
The change of clock.
Change of clock. Okay, you're present. We don't care how long it takes you to change it. Park Commission President, uh, Commission President Isaac Zekel?
He is present.
He is virtual?
Yeah.
Okay. And my clone is here too. Thank you, Paul.
Website and Technology Samantha, oh, that's my clone.
Right. Robb Commissioner Bob Sokowski?
He is absent. He will join us if he can because he said he's working today.
Okay. Try and get out of here before eight.
It would be very good. All right. Thank you very much. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? I sent out a copy a little bit after three highlighted in blue, adding several items.
We have to talk the agenda first.
Well, that's what I'm doing.
Oh, you said minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant to say agenda. Yeah, I sent out the last agenda a little after three.
I just noted that the park board and park boosters meeting dates have changed.
Okay.
So it'll be September 30th.
Okay, very good. All right, please make note of that, everybody.
What is it?
Uh, it will be September 30th. I didn't want to send out another one after I just sent.
I put that in the email too.
I know you did, I saw it, but I didn't want to change this again.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any other additions or corrections to this?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the.
All right. Okay. Ralph Box moved to approve. Sam Paxton, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes, it has been approved. Let us move on to the minutes. The approval of the minutes of August 13th as well as June 11th and July 9th. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Joan did send out copies to us again the other day of all three.
And I backed the back and the only one I have.
Was, yes.
And I did change everything except I still cannot on, what was it? On Isaac Zekel as to whether he was here or whether he was virtual or whether he was absent.
Hey, Isaac, were you in the meeting last month?
June 11th meeting.
I'm not sure.
June 11th meeting.
June 11th?
The June 11th meeting, Isaac, I had you as, what did I say?
You had him present, I think.
Present.
At one spot, you said that the attendance was supposed to be absent and then the other spot.
I think he may have walked, you may have walked in late. Is that possible? Isaac?
I can't tell.
I think I'm.
I had you as absent.
I was a person that's been around.
Okay. I don't have those notes.
Right. And people were talking over each other or something. I couldn't understand it.
That's okay.
So, all right. You were going to listen to the present then?
Yes, it was present.
Yes, yeah. I think, right. I think so too. All right. So that was the minutes of June, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so then.
Are there any other questions or corrections on those minutes?
So who shared the sample?
I had.
Well, probably something good.
Yeah.
But why did Ralph Box give the, um, report?
For what?
For the advisory plan commission. I have Isaac Zekel absent and Ralph Box reported APC approved three season porch at 2:15 Pocahonti.
In the meeting minutes I'm looking at.
For the election, June?
This is for June.
Oh, okay, we're in June.
Yeah, that's. Not August, but June.
We have three of them to go through.
I'm sorry, I thought we were working on this month.
Well, that's why I sent out three of them to you.
Oh, that's okay.
And I wanted your opinion so we could get these settled so I can get them into the gateway system. We're already two months late. I had them.
The meeting minutes at that time were good.
Yes.
I don't know where I was in the right room, but I was okay.
Okay. Might refresh your memory, I think. It was on HC Purchase of Equipment. Sam Paxton gave a report updating equipment. No written report was provided, but pickup and delivery to be scheduled in near future. Price included in original bid for the new equipment.
Okay, so that was something that was corrected on it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Sam. Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I need a motion to approve the minutes from June 11th?
I motion we approve the minutes from, I think, June 11th, July 9th, and August 13th. Can we do all three or do we have to do them one at a time?
I'm okay with that.
Do all three at once? Okay. All right, any questions then on the July 9th minutes?
Me.
Sam, did you have any comments or corrections of the night?
I don't have them in front of me, so I don't know.
Okay, they were on the email Joan sent us the other day.
I sent the email Friday on the three.
Yeah.
And I did the corrections that Sam gave me over the weekend.
I guess I saw that.
Yesterday.
Okay. Well, Sam is still looking. Does anybody have any other comments? Samantha made some comments regarding the minutes of August 13th. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
No.
No? Okay. I did not have any questions or comments on that. Sam, did you have anything for the 13th?
No.
Okay.
I'll try again to move that we approve the minutes from June 11th, July 9th, and August 13th.
All right, I need a second. All right, any more questions on anything? If there are no questions, then I will ask for vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes, the minutes have been approved for all three minutes, three meetings, that is. Okay? Let us move on then to reports from committees and so forth, clerk, treasurer, invoices and claims. Thank you. Are there any questions? Well, let's see, we're going to do the first additional for August, correct, Joan?
Right, let's do that one first. And for that one, this is according to the appropriations, telephone, anything, telephone and internet, eighty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
You don't have to read them all off. You don't have to read them all off to us, Joan. We have them in front of us.
Okay.
Are there any questions from anyone on the council?
My only question is, what is the web development fee for?
That for anything that concerns our webpage.
So we do, but we pay for that once a year, so I'm just wondering what this particular charge was for. Because I didn't have a renewal for anything that I, unless it was a domain renewal. Actually, that might have been it.
Don't have the copies with me, but it has something to do, anything that has to do with the web development.
Right, but I'm the web developer.
Everything's underneath the webpage.
Right, so I'm the web developer and I'm unfamiliar with the charge, so I'm just checking.
Well, I thought I had checked with you when we did that.
Um, I will follow up separately and look at emails and figure out what that is.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
See, I have a line item, MBH Garage and Motor. What is, what is that?
What?
Eighty-one hundred dollars for.
Garage and motor.
The eighty-one hundred dollars for was paying for the upfront payment in order to get the roof of the garage replaced.
Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the August additional vouchers.
I will second that motion.
All right. Ralph Box says Samantha Arnold, second, to approve the August 24 additional vouchers. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes, the motion has passed. All right, now let's move on to the September 10th vouchers. Have you had a chance to look at what Joan gave us today?
By the way, for the audience, that amount for the additional in August was eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six thousand and three cents. And the total for September 10th is fourteen thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I ask for motion.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers.
All right, Sam Paxton moves. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Ralph Box, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. And the accounts payable for September 10th have been passed. Thank you very much. Okay, are, is there any kind of a report on the outstanding collections of the fines?
Nothing.
Okay.
I don't have something, I don't know.
Okay. Nothing on this? Okay, thank you. Uh, resolutions and ordinances, resolution 2024 dash zero seven, the townwide curbside leaf and stick pickup.
We, we reviewed the resolution online. I forgot I have copies here for submission.
Okay. I have some too.
Get one posted online. I have it 07, if that's the right number. Yeah. I don't know without seeing the kind of. But that's, yeah. So this is the resolution for townwide curbside leaf and stick pickup. Do you need me to read it into the minutes or can we make a motion to approve? Any questions?
You can do it by title again.
What's that?
You can do it by title. You have the meeting in this way.
Okay, but you could.
You can do it by title.
Yeah.
Just reading the title.
So this is reading the resolution 2024 dash 07, townwide curbside leaf and stick pickup.
All right, are there any questions? Anything for discussion? No? If there are no other issues, then I need a motion to approve the resolution for the leaf and stick pickup. We only need this one time, correct?
Yeah, just make sure it's a motion to approve on first reading. So you're submitting a list.
All right.
Okay, very good.
All right, so who's going to make the motion? Okay, Ralph Box moves to approve the resolution 2024 dash 07 on first reading. I need a second.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and this resolution has been approved. I'll get these things to you to sign in just a moment. Okay? Do we need any more question, any of these for signing? I had two copies.
I have four copies.
Oh, excellent, okay.
We need to.
You know, you guys can start signing these and I'll sign them all at the end.
Okay.
Okay? And then these are the, these are the minutes for me to sign. Okay? All right, so let's move on. Our departmental reports. Police Chief?
Good evening, everyone. For the month of August, I want to be pleased department responded to three hundred ninety-five calls for service when compared to three hundred thirty-three in previous year for the increase of sixty-two. During the month of August, twenty-one incident reports were documented. A total of eight individuals were arrested. One felony arrest for possession of methamphetamine. One felony arrest for operating a vehicle while intoxicated. Two misdemeanor arrests for operating a vehicle while intoxicated. One misdemeanor arrest for driving on a suspended driver's license. One misdemeanor arrest for possession of marijuana and two warrants arrest. Specific to the town of Michiana Shores, I'd like to commend back on August 13th. We received a welfare check in 400 block of Oakdale Drive. This welfare check, Corporal Matthew Farley, had a ride on scene, found an elderly female lying unresponsive on the bedroom floor. He gained access to the home, began to provide emergency medical services with CPR. Sergeant Nick Capella from the Trail Creek Police Department responded to assist. And in turn, they each switched off doing CPR on the victim until EMS arrived and were able to take the lady to France system for the medical assistance. So both of them did an excellent job that day rendering life-saving measures. Then on August 27th, from the unfortunate storm, I know that hit home hard here with one of your council members unfortunately having a large tree that came down on their vehicle. So we have a report on that as well, unfortunately.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have a report with concerns.
Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, any questions to the chief? No? Okay, good. I'm going to ask Bob Sokowski, since he's here on his break probably, if he could give his report right now. Are you doing one for fire chief as well?
Yeah, I need to fire him first.
Okay. Very good.
I'm not going to read all of it.
Right, that's okay.
Sixty-nine point two-two hours for the month, enter regular readings. We had twenty-two calls for service in the month of August. Two fires in Michiana, six first responders, five fires in Michigan, Michigan. One first responder.
She's on the board. Do them at the end. Keep going.
For a first responder and full fire call. Probably do this one.
Well, okay. All right, thank you very much. Everybody would have gotten a copy via email. I believe I forwarded to Gary's. Okay, very good. All right, anything on, as the road commissioner, Bob?
Uh, naturally the radar sign installed quite a bit of storm damage in the storm of the 27th and throughout the 28th. I sent everybody there, finally got five waters.
Okay.
For the shield of the new mowers to be for one, probably allowing it, it's going to break down the windows and chassis. That's going to be about two thousand dollars to replace the windows and shield is less expensive than replacing the glass in the tractor.
Okay, so I understand that all of that is now being taken care of? That's been handled with a purchase order and everything, correct?
Joan, I like the.
I didn't have a copy of it yet that I recall. Plus, I need you to print your name underneath your signature because it can't be read.
Okay, make sure you do that, Bob, before you leave then, okay? Thank you very much.
For the paving project.
Yeah, this is for the paving project.
Okay.
But as far as the tractor.
Okay. Any questions for the road commissioner at this point? No? If nothing, thank you very much for your report, okay? Let us move on. As the building commissioner, I have some reports I'll send to the electronic copies, but I brought some reports right here to see so that you could see them visually here. One, two, three. Pass these along to you guys. Here we go. I will not read them either, but we do have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven that were issued actually with cards. There's two numbers in here that are missing, and that is because they were either missing a payment or they're missing something or a signature off of an application. So until that gets taken care of.
Thank you.
You know, they will not get their actual building permit. So I will check with Brandon for anything that we have maybe have come in since I was away. If, you know, any other kind of questions, you can ask me about those later on.
You have a copy for me?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Here we go. And I'm also, the two STRs still need to have inspections, but I have not, one was going to take place and then they never showed up that weekend. So they still, if they want to get anything done, they have to get those done like real soon. So, and that's it. And that's Sam, I will get you that, you know, the other information you asked for last time on that, okay? Here we go. Let's move on to the next. I don't have anything special for code enforcement, you know, because I haven't been driving around to enforce codes on my own here. Park Board, Gene Paxton?
The park board, Matt Durstman, I was putting during. We discussed the progress of San Castle with our last project that was led to go specifically the regrading and reggrabbing of the path. And I'd like San Castle to make its present to address the progress.
Be happy to. I did talk with Gene that probably August 20th, we were working on it. We suffered to break down a lot of pieces of machinery and I was working on it this fall. Today, I went and borrowed another piece of machinery which I did, was able to grade out the whole path. And we also started moving the block, the stone, heaven, really graded the stone off. We have a thinking tomorrow to have a good block of stone. I also want to point out that, you know, we had the storm on August 27th. And August 28th, I tend to call it the morning, we were already down with the park cleaning it up, making sure sticks were all done. So the parks in the trail also that day, I went down the trail, I worked on the trail that day, getting rid of the branches and limbs that are out there. So the park and the trail are my main goal for the town. And it's not like I'm planning to, you know, I apologize for the slow and stuff. Sometimes projects do have little grims that pop up and just happens to be just a pain in my side trying to make this job done. But I use every kind of, it's always on my mind to get it done. I want it done the right way because my name of mine, you, I would like to beat the trail away and go straight. So, you know, the last couple of weeks here, I've been doing nothing but gripes and demonizing by accidents here. So I just want to go forward to say that I am definitely, I'm working hard and I want to look very nice.
I thank you for your addition to Gene's report. Gene, continue with your report and then if there's any questions, we'll bring those up.
One, one thing I'd like to clarify is nothing that I do associated with this council is personal. And I really do not agree with the term demonizing. That infers that I have been, I have gone with my current job. What I have done is I have been fairly demanding since this contract was let in October of 2024. Of course, the funding was in preparation for January of 2024. And the job is not completed. The asset of the communication has been very small between the contractor and myself.
I'm agreeing.
Excuse me?
But I do.
Excuse, no, Gene is continuing? Gene is continuing her report. You must let her finish. Go ahead, Gene.
But I do, I, I have lived the help of the council and firm for, you know, letter of assessment issue to fill in the issue. So if that is demonizing, I have to disagree with that.
Okay.
With that. And at any time, I want to say to the council, I am appointed by you. You can remain with me. I have no qualms about what I feel like I enjoy more than him. So at any minute of any day, you can say, Gene Paxton, we do not want you as park board president. So I will go on. The park board proposed an RFP for park maintenance for 2025 to 2027. And that RFP, the town board and clerk, both treasurer, candidates, and attorney, that RFP was sent to Serviscape, San Castle, Dance Landscaping, Signature Farms, Greener Grass and Landscapes, and Mabelson. The sealed proposals will be unsealed and read on October 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I would appreciate the clerk treasurer to be present at this meeting and the town council meeting for the parks.
It's on the 28th?
Yeah.
October 28th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Volunteers have been doing invasive species removal and that has began the work that the council allowed to be done on the town on lots adjacent to Robb Tuckerman's. We're calling this separate save the forest that's led by Robb Tuckerman and Chris Wall. If anyone wants to volunteer and form a meet in this area, your help would be greatly appreciated. And you would need to contact Robb Tuckerman or Chris Wall to be kind of instructed on what to do. Skip Mafo has been at Dynamo. He's the vice president of the park board and he's ready to head up a day of fence removal at Kincaid. And the reinstallation of the new fence, we're waiting for the ground to be removed in a couple of weeks. We'll skip the schedule with us. And Skip has been instrumental in obtaining over a thousand dollars from private donations to contribute to the resurface of the tennis courts of Kinnick in 2025. Our next meeting is Monday, September 30th, 2024. And lastly, I'd kind of like to say this, the parks have looked good and the front of the lawns look good. So I do come in San Castle for that effort, but I'm going to stand by my comments on the granite project. So, and Joan, I'd like to be included in the attendance. I wasn't called, so I'd like to be included in the attendance at tonight's meeting. That's it. Our next meeting.
I missed that whole line. You're not the only one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. All right, thank you. Thank you for so, Joan, I mean Joan, Gene, you know, for the, for the report. All right, council members, any comments, any questions? All right. I know we had some questions. Do you want them now or do you want them later on?
Comment.
During public comment? Okay, then you'll have to hold on until public comment. Okay, let's move on to advisory plan commission. Isaac?
Yes, good evening. So we've been continuing to work on the tree ordinance plans and we are targeting, other than the year, having something in front of this council if everything goes well.
Okay.
Am I good?
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Isaac. That's it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let us move on. Let's see, what's our next one? Probably Nipsy and White Dish. Oh, no, BZA, Matt Bowen. I don't have any kind of a report from Matt. He did not submit anything.
I don't think they have a meeting today.
Maybe not. They were going to do a business meeting, but I don't know whether they had anything, you know, the BZA itself. But I have not received anything from him when I inquired. White Dish Drainage Board, I did not attend the meeting this morning, but Attorney Brad Nadansky was there, so he might bring something up for us about this.
Yes, actually, White Dish was addressed. There's two sections to White Dish that the town has taken kind of responsibility for due to two different memory wounds of understanding of the time based on grants that the town applied for. The first part is from El Porte for Oakdale. And at the time I was introduced to you, basically the town decided to take a bunch of corporate kind of grant for to maintain the portion of White Dish submitted to the grant for the next 20 years. That was December 19th, 2023, so we are past that 20 years. So the grant board is aware of this, the grant board's attorney, they brought to my attention. They brought to my attention, so now the next step would be either transitioning that section of the ditch back to Drainage or jurisdictional control, or reaching out to the town and saying, well, your desire is, I, there's nothing that says you can't extend this, but I don't know that the town has a desire to extend it. Uh, the second section, which is from Fort Dale, Metadrive, that was entered into again on a 20-year term, but that was signed in 2020. So that was relatively new.
Wait, the second section, when is it 20 years old?
It was.
In another 16 years.
2020.
Oh, so it's got 20 years from, yeah, gotcha. Yeah, got another 16 years. Mm-hmm. Okay.
So just bringing that to the attention of, just literally came up this morning.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions on this?
So, um, we can talk about it offline for a while.
Sure.
I need to understand.
Oh, yeah. See, it, very quickly though, residents pay in a small amount of money on their taxes for the maintenance of the ditch. But because the town applied for and received grants, including monies from the Drainage Board, in order for us to, you know, to complete that nature path, to begin with the first one, that we in turn promised to maintain it. So anytime something falls over there and we do that, we paid that out of town funds. The section that goes from El Portal all the way to the Michigan line has not been improved. So anytime there's an issue, something falls in, I call the Drainage Board and they send someone out, then they take care of it for us. So this is a big thing now. So if we keep maintaining responsibility ourselves, that we have to make sure we're going to have enough funds to do it, whether it comes from the Drainage Board or whatever. Um, otherwise, you know, it's going to come out of our own pocket. So that's going to be an issue we'll bring up and, and Brad will address it with the, you know, with the drainage.
Yeah, from the Drainage Board too, but you may all want to pay attention to your tax bills to see if you have any ditches.
If you have anything on there, yeah.
On your extra tax bill.
Because.
That would be the big change, right? If, if there's no ditch assessment on there and this goes back to the Drainage Board, then there will be basically, as, if the fund needs to be funded, it's assessed to the properties that are serviced by that ditch.
Okay.
Right now, you're paying that out of town funds, so.
Okay.
It's one way or another.
All, all the residents of the town would pay.
Joe, I thought it was all the residents of the town and the case like this has to pay because we're so small.
Everyone pays for it.
No, yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the, the exception to that one or two is just for the El Portal to the Michigan State one.
That may be the case.
That, I'm for right there.
And that would make sense because that's the only part where the Drainage Board is responsible for maintaining. So the way it generally works, the regular drainage dish, from the county Drainage Board's perspective, is they will fund through taxing a fund. And if that fund isn't used, then the taxes aren't assessed. But as it gets used, then obviously it needs to be replenished. And so I don't even know, I mean, I suppose they have historical records to know if they need to set the assessment out for that section. I could go back 20 years.
Oh, okay. Interesting. I'll look at our records at home.
Well, I think we should, uh, talk about and debate.
Right, absolutely.
Make sure we understand.
Yes.
Times and just discuss it some.
Okay.
And see where the Drainage Board wants to come in with it too.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much on explaining that. Uh, website, Samantha?
Um, quick, just to a quick report with the website. Um, um, traffic on the website, you know, is it huge over the last year? We a little bit more, we, people continue to visit. It was likely when they dropped, but, you know, it's a busy time of year. Last year it was busy. People are mostly coming to the website, no, no surprise for the pages on the beach stop and the nature trails and the events page. You know, that's where they're coming. Um, most people visit on the phone, so it's, the site serves well on the phone, which is great. That's how most people come for information. Um, and we only had two contacts requests this month versus, uh, which is not surprising. In the summer, we had, you know, five, six, we only had two in August. Um, so that is the.
Okay.
Quick website report.
Oh.
Oh, and then I can reply, I should add in here, under website and IOT, um, I have been working with the state of Indiana Technology. We're trying to, um, move our website to have instead of be in townofmichiganashores.org, it will be townofmichiganashores.in.gov. Um, and there have, I was actually on the phone with them this week. I've been emailing the last two weeks because there's just some, um, technical things in order to switch that domain name. Um, and one of the reasons, besides we are a municipality and have that, but another reason to have that, um, domain switched is we need that before we can take advantage of their, um, state discounted services for either Google Workspaces or Teams. So this is step one. And then step two is, is working with their, the agency to, to do that. So hopefully this will get resolved soon. I've learned more things about the office suite availabilities, but I'm not going to go into that till I get there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I have nothing new to report on NERC, except that NERC has, um, asked all members of it what particular things are of interest to them. Transportation, development of business, the environment, and I forgot what the last one was. So I actually signed up for environment because all those other things basically don't apply to us because we don't have major roads that go through. You know, highway 12 is across the road, you know, so it doesn't count for us. And we have no business developing in our town, so I didn't figure that was a, a very primary kind of thing. So I requested environment again. So we'll see what happens. Um, then, uh, let's move on to unfinished business. Search for the building commissioner, code enforcement officer, Sam.
We had two inquiries come through the website posting.
Oh, good.
Uh, in the last couple of days. I've contacted both of them, had a conversation yesterday. Uh, the first one was with a town, a property owner here in town. Uh, so I've exchanged information with her. Uh, we'll have some internal discussion about next steps potentially with her. And then, uh, the second individual is a resident of Michigan City. Uh, he's, uh, provided me with his resume and we're completely scheduled for, uh, initial phone conversation this week.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. Um, so now, actually, I, I still have dead trees on private property and their public roads.
Been a dangerous tree letter.
Yes.
And I know I got an update from Brenda on, uh, one had signed for the certified letter, uh, that we sent them. The other one, uh, came back, uh, that's a bad address. So we sent it to the actual home here. I think they have.
They do.
They did get it. Okay, so both of them have acknowledged that they.
Okay, they precedents, okay.
Certified, uh, uh, letter.
Okay.
So it's now on their hands.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Okay. All right.
And hopefully we'll take some action on the trees and not be given a fair warning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would ask everyone here and otherwise, uh, if you happen to see, uh, as a result of the storm, there may be some additional trees that are now, um, looming, uh, that we're aware of. So if you see any dead trees, uh, we were on the walk the other night and saw a standing dead tree, I believe, behind your house, uh, back in that, your area somewhere. We have to go ahead and go back, but anyway, if you see him, raise the fort, give me an all of a craft letter and send it out.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Um, and trimming at street corners and roadside properties, we can't do any of that until, obviously, we get that piece of equipment on the machinery. So, uh, nothing to discuss on that. Um, okay? And we've already, I included the La Porte County Drainage Board inquiry, um, but Brad has addressed it for us, so we can move on from that. Under new business, uh, there are a couple of things that I would like to bring up and that I did not include in here. And I don't know that there, we're going to be doing a lot of, um, discussing on it. Uh, but I just realized I had some notes over here. One of them was that, remember, there's a budget timetable that Joan put together for us? So that we, you know, we could take a look at when the different dates are for the meetings that are coming up. Um, everybody was on that email, I believe, from Joan, so we should all have gotten that information. Uh, number two, engineering, uh, what is it? Firms regarding the RFP, I will give you, I will send you electronically the copy that, that Global sent us, I believe, that I had forwarded to you earlier, but I'll give you paper copies. And this is what the information he states here is what I would suggest we include as we request an RFP from, you know, any of the engineering companies that we might use.
Oh, this is, you're saying this is a sample RFP?
This is, well, this is his proposal for how much they would, would, uh, charge us for the work. Um, you also all got copies from Brad who was appoint, approaching us from, is it Haas and Associates? And theirs has a whole, it's not as clear as his. His is very clear. So if we put together an RFP, this is the formula that I would like to use because the other one was not clear. And only in a conversation with them did I, you know, determine that their fees would be astronomical for us as a town. So, but that would be something you could look at.
I don't think we need to tighten up the RFP.
Yeah.
Just asking for it, even the one Global sent, it was pretty broad based on the amount.
We want to make it more sophisticated. Okay. And then, so take a look at this and then take, compare it to the other one and come up with, you know, suggestions so that I would put it together. I'll try to put it together in the next week and then we could look at this. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Um, and then, um, we'll be posting things about like the cutting back of the roads again on a newsletter we'll put out. You'll post it on the website.
Yeah, so that would go.
Okay. All right, good. And then we'll put it on a newsletter too. And one of the things we have to remind people about leaf pickup is that, uh, it is sticks and twigs and it is not, you know, storm damaged tree limbs, trees and so forth that we will pick up. Cause I did notice there are people have piled up huge, you know, things at the sides of the road. And if those things stay longer, we'll have to send them letters that they should take care of all of those things.
And that would be probably new business is to set a leaf pickup date at this meeting.
Right. So anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that I included those under there. Okay? Um, then let's move on to, uh, attorney report.
Right. So what I'm going to request is sometime before the end of this month, if we can coordinate, we can do a very agreed session. I think a half hour would be sufficient if you want to set up for an hour.
Okay.
An hour aside, if you want to do it via Zoom, maybe not a marketing meeting for everybody, but, um, just updates on a couple of pieces of litigation that went on, plus some litigation efforts that are now past the, the 2000 stage.
Okay, then perhaps you can give us dates when you're available to do that and then.
I can give you dates on not available right now.
Oh, okay.
I can tell you, it's a good one for you. You think probably, is that better for everybody?
You'd probably, Samantha works all this evening? Evening I'll be better?
Evenings, ones I couldn't do are September 17th or 18th, uh, September 26th. Any other evening we do now?
Okay. All right.
My recommendation is to do it sooner than later. Let's not push it out too far.
I, I say deadline to file on one of the things on, on October 6th, so I can't, I'll be meeting with you all until the end of the day.
Um, how about?
Yep, this week.
Next week looks.
This week. So.
What week? What, I couldn't tell what nights were back, but what's a good night?
This week, Thursday, Friday, I'm going to be out for funerals.
How about next week?
Next week. I should say that.
You said you couldn't do 17 or 18.
17 or 18.
I.
How about the 19th?
I cannot do 19th. We're leaving for funeral.
How about Monday, the 16th?
Okay with me?
Monday, the 16th.
I'm good.
Okay. Monday, 16th.
What time?
Anytime in the evening works for me.
I'll do it online.
Can we do a 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM, okay with you, Brad?
Yeah.
Okay. 7:00 PM.
You want to do that as well?
We can do it as well.
That would be great.
All right. Very good. Let's add this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exact session.
To discuss the leach.
Okay. Very good.
Unreleashed.
All right. Thank you. So that's about, that's all that we, we, again, we'll go on forward. Any other miscellaneous business? No? Okay. Uh, communications received, you saw on the, on the, um, on the agenda that I listed something that, uh, one of our residents, Kat Purz, has sent an email and requested that this be shared with everyone, so I made a photocopy. So you would have a copy of this. Here we go. Joan, Brad, if you care, they have a copy. And this is just required, uh, paperwork that floodplain administrators need. We have been, both Ray and I, have done the classes online, you know, for floodplain administration regularly. I informed him of that, but because Mr. Purz requested via his email that we, you know, shared this document with the meeting, that is what I'm doing right now, um, so that, uh, that we have done what he had requested of his thing. Um, I did get a phone call just today, well, I found the message today from, uh, I believe it was Pat Pudlow, who was saying that there is a, she lives just at the intersection of Birchwood and, and.
Stop sign.
Right. With the stop sign that's down.
I was just going to tell Bob about it.
Okay, good. So he already knows about it. So I just needed to let you know that that was, uh.
Oh, I don't know if he knows about it, but you mail him that.
Okay. All right, fine. Yeah, right. He misses, he left. Okay. Uh, we can now, uh, open up for public comments, please.
Um, just to backtrack here on the Park Board issue. Um, every time that Jean has called, it's, uh, promptly called to the back or touched the back. Back in my first, um, July 20th, Jean called me about a problem that she was issued, that she was having about taking pay for a swing that she bought. And I was very nice and had a nice conversation for probably 20 minutes on how I usually get paid, okay? And if she needed me to issue the bill and get paid and pay her back, I would do that. And each time I could tell her what my plans were for the path. So I'm upset that saying that I have limited communications, but every single time branch falls, anything falls. The other day, I even took my own time to go out to the park, replace four cedar rails. And each time I parked there, and then I noticed right above my head that the wires for touching this oak, or this maple tree, and it was arched. So I wanted to call 911 dispatch so that we could tell NPSO. At the same time, I was standing in the street, Jean comes running around in a turn here and skips me. Okay? Now I'm trying to, I mean, this is totally, I, anybody calls me, I call them back, okay? I tried to call Sam on several occasions. I don't feel, Rick, Sam and I have a very good communications. But I have a good machine, and I have.
Okay.
So I am upset that you would go down that, that road. Now, I want the project to work and I always said I wanted it to work. It has taken me and it pains me that I can't get it done as fast as I can, okay? Now, yes, we did talk about it in October, but the funds weren't there. And then after everybody got together back in May, we started the project, I tried to get it going, you know, materials were tough to get. You know, I'm taking a loss on this whole thing, this material in trucking process, I'm going through the roof. But I kept to my original estimate back in October. I'm going to lose money in this whole thing. And I am putting my own oats weight into it.
Okay.
And I'm doing a body of myself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the comments, Jean. We're not going to get into, thank you. You may, you said yours before, so we're not going to get into this. Thank you.
I, I actually would like this five minutes to, um, clarify my position after that.
Um, I, I'm not sure that we should get into this, you know, right now, right?
I do want to defend my behavior and I stand by it. Yes, I'm going through my text message, um, messages with Nick. I do firmly recall the conversation about the toddler swing. Yes, Nick's response was, uh, quick after that. But I am talking specifically about this gravel.
Yes. We understand.
So, yes, so. Clear. It's just the grass.
Just the gravel thing. Yes.
Thank you, Jean, for, yeah. So thank you for clarifying that you let off your report today and talking about the situation with the gravel. And Mick, thank you for, um, following up that, yes, and I, Jean, I hear Jean acknowledged you were always very responsive. Um, it's to the one particular project that has been probably a thorn in the side of everyone, just trying to get it done. It sounds like you've had equipment that's bothered you. We've had weather, the storm was horrible. Um, we just kind of want to lay out that you are, you are struggling with issues and, but as a park board trying to get things for the town, we have things that we're struggling with too, and we have to report out and lay out what's going on. So I appreciate that, that you came and I appreciate the detailed report Jean, Jean has put together. We're just trying to move things forward so that we can use our budget appropriately. And also we have to respond to residents asking us questions as well. So we're trying to dot all the i's and work within everyone's challenges. So thank you.
And I do talk to the residents.
Yeah.
Mick, thank you.
Because I am a taxpayer here and I do talk to them and I have a very good rapport with a lot of people.
Thank you.
So I hear things and I try to mitigate things as best I can. And the why that it's not getting done.
Thank you.
No. I'm trying to cover up anything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it is what it is.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Yes. And then, and then please be in touch with Jean then as to when you are planning on getting it done.[1796.13] Because this is a job that needs to be completed. When we sign an agreement with something, unfortunately, even though other things interfere, that it's got to be determined at one time or another whether or not it can be completed at all. So please make sure you respond to the park board with regards to that. Thank you too, again, Jean, for your report, you know, on this. Any council comments?